Call to order the meeting of the City Council. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yep.
Counselor Delasola.
Yep.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Yeah.
Counselor Matusky.
Yeah.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
And President Napolitano.
Here.
We do have 11 members present. Mr. President.
Okay, we've already... Please, I suspend that. First of all, before we get started, I do want to acknowledge former Commissar Counselor Nick Sayah, who'll be sitting in and assisting Counselor Simonelli translating.
Welcome.
Welcome. I've never had an opportunity to serve in the same chambers with you. It's a pleasure.
Is that right there?
You want to welcome our new member, Michael Marchese?
And I'd also like to acknowledge the return of Counselor Michael Marchese to the City Council. Welcome. Clerk will read the agenda.
Make a motion to open public participation.
If we could, before we do that, can we have a moment of silence? We lost Jack Garen.
Yeah.
Recently. Great guy, person agent. We should stand for a moment of silence for Jack Garen. Thank you, Mr. President.
So the motion is to open the public participation.
Second motion. Okay, the motion, open public participation. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Public participation is open.
I have one speaker, Patrick Scully from Shute Street.
Just want to read the... Again, the rules are on public participation. You have three minutes. You're able to speak. City Council is not required to... Is not able to respond. And if there's any issues that we can follow up with, please contact information with us.
If you could please turn your mic on. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Patrick Scully, and I live on Shute Street here in Everett. Mr. President, back on December 11th, this body went on record as supporting Everett residents, covered under the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, folks, DACA, and the Temporary Protected Status, folks, TPS. Counselor Simonelli dissented, as is his right. In multiple media reports following the vote, Counselor Simonelli was quoted in his statement as saying, quote, "We have to take care of our own first."
Mr. Chairman.
One moment, one moment, please.
I'm simply... I'm just public statements.
If we could, our rules prohibit personal attacks on members. I'm just going to ask the clerk to read the rules so that we're there.
I read the rules in advance, Mr. President. All I am doing is recounting public statements. I can't possibly be attacking or disparaging someone if I'm reading their own words.
Right, I understand. And I'm going to ask him to read it just so everybody is on the same page.
Sure.
Okay, if you would. Please.
Will you have to read the whole thing?
Please, thank you.
Regarding Rule 10 of the City Council Rules, Public Participation, each formal session of the City Council shall include a period of 10 minutes. Will last up to 10 minutes. At the regular meetings of the City Council, subject matter of the public participation shall not be limited to the items before the City Council at the present regular meeting. At any special meeting of the City Council, subject matter of the public participation shall be limited to the subject matter of the present special meeting. For the purpose of this rule, the term "public" shall be construed to mean any member of the public at large, and not limited to it, restrict any individual from participation. Each member of the public shall place their name and address and brief description of their topic on the public participation sign-in sheet prior to the start of each formal session. Each member of the public shall be limited to no more than two minutes of public participation without unanimous consent of the members present. Large groups should designate a spokesperson. This rule does not limit or replace the provisions of Rule 16, which remain in full effect. Participants shall address all comments to the president. Participants shall not promote or oppose any candidate running for office. Participants shall not use public participation for political purposes. Participants shall not advertise for commercial purposes or private gain. Participants shall not make personal attacks on any City Council members or other elected or appointed city officials. Anyone making out of order comments or acting in an unruly manner shall be subject to removal from the meeting. And lastly, this rule shall be posted in the City Council chamber.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I would assume that that does not tick from my time.
No.
And I would just also like to preface that all of these statements are in the public domain available to anybody that wants to look at it. None of them are mine, other than what I say. I'll continue.
Regardless of whether it's public knowledge or not, it's not allowed in this chamber. You know that. We all know that. We've gone through this before. Not allowed to talk about any counselor. I don't care if it's today, tomorrow, or yesterday. You're not allowed to speak about it, even if he wrote it.
It's not what the rules say, sir. Mr. President, that's not what the rules say. Mr. Clerk, that is not what the rules say.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment on this. One person at a time, please. We're watching to see where the fine line is to be drawn here. And again, we agree that, you know, you're not... Any personal attack, the... If you're going to bring up information that's been in the press already, please justify the reason... Give us a reason as to what the justification of bringing that up is.
Sure, I was trying to get... I was trying to get there, sir.
It should not be to embarrass or shame a member, okay? That you can do if you choose to in other mediums, but this is not the place. But please, if you'd proceed.
Multiple media reports, Mr. President, had the counselor saying, quote, "We have to take care of our own first," and that he wanted to, quote, "See Everett, keep Everett people first."
Please, Counselor Simonelli, please.
Mr. President, I would ask the rhetorical question, who qualifies as a Everett resident? Subsequently, I asked the counselor on social media some of his positions, as I have of some of the other counselors, who are very responsive, as a matter of fact. He told me, and again, these words are in print, that, quote, "Our new neighbors should stop crying at our council meetings," end quote. Later in the conversation, I asked him further about that, to which he told me, quote, "Go back to where you came from," unquote. For the record, Mr. President, I grew up in the Berkshires. I've been here for about 15 months. I chose Everett as my home. I'm not going anywhere. Mr. President, immigrants in Everett are trying to make a better life for their families, just like the rest of us. They pay taxes, which pays for fire, police, other services. They are our neighbors, our fellow parishioners, our schoolmates, our caregivers, our union members, and our hard-working parents. Mr. President, what Counselor Simonelli had to say speaks directly to who should be allowed to speak in this forum to our council. And as such, I would ask that the council go on record as affirming who gets to speak at these council meetings, and who shouldn't be crying, end quote. I thank you for your indulgence, Mr. President.
If I could respond to one part of that, and I believe the readings for the public participation gives me that ability.
Yes, sir.
At no point has this body prohibited or restricted any member of the community from coming up here and speaking, both at length. We've authorized extra time.
Absolutely.
We've allowed translators. Individual members, if they have a personal opinion that's contrary to that, it does not belong in this chamber.
Sure.
And that includes bringing it to the attention of the body in this chamber. I respect your position. I'm the grandson of immigrants, both sides of my family.
As we all are at some point.
One of our members came to this country from another country.
Yes.
The majority of us are first, second, or third-generation Americans.
I just wanted to reiterate that, at the very beginning, I am fully in support of the noble vote and the noble move by this council to support the folks in DACA and TPS. It was a stand-up thing to do.
It's the right thing to do.
And I think a lot of people believe it was the right thing to do. Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Counselor Matusky.
Thank you.
As long as it's not on the topic, because again, the only one that is allowed to comment was myself.
This is a statement.
To the rules. And I'm not trying to step... I'm not trying to overstep. Please. Yeah, your excuse.
Excuse me. Statement on the rules that we have in place. Now, tonight, you've expressed as the new president that you're going to control this. You're not supposed to mention names, Mr. President, and he did that. You can write newspaper letters. You can do that. You cannot mention somebody's name. Let's stick to the rules. No, no, the rules say you can't mention a name.
No, it doesn't. He writes the rules.
That it can't mention...
You can't mention the name. Now, if we have to get written...
The specific rule doesn't say that.
One minute, please. We'll get some clarification directly from the rules.
It just says that the participants shall not make personal attacks on any City Council members.
No, we're clearing up the rule here.
I was attacked up here five years ago, week after week.
Stop it. Let's go. Let's stop this. First of all, we are still in public participation, and I allowed you to speak. I'm not going to lose control of this meeting 15 minutes into my leadership here. I'm asking the clerk to reiterate again in the rules.
I'd like to know that. Let's clarify that.
If we're going to do this right now, but I'm not going to tolerate any cross-talking here. Please.
I'm going to reiterate one more time.
Do not recognize me, Mr. President.
One second. Let the clerk reread this, so this way here, this will address that.
And I'd like to make a statement after I hear that, if it's okay with you.
Under Rule 10... Sorry, Mr. President. Under Rule 10, under Section K, "Participants shall not make personal attacks on any City Council members or other elected or appointed city officials." That is the only place where it says that you cannot say another person's name.
Well, it's in writing, Mr. President. Now, I'd just like to finish a statement, Mr. President, because I had been bothered by this public participation three and a half years ago by an outsider that came to this community and attacked me six meetings, six alderman meetings, week after week. My mother had to watch this creep come up here and disparage me. So we've got to get this public participation under control, or it's going to become political, and it's not fair to the membership. That's all I'm saying.
From this point on, I'm going to make it perfectly clear. When we open public participation, the only one who will speak is the participant or myself to address the participant. Beyond that, there'll be no asking to be recognized. There'll be no comment on a person's comments until we've closed public participation. When we've closed public participation, again, you still need to be recognized before you're allowed to speak. So I don't want a situation that is potentially already volatile erupt into more than it is because we're now bringing up past events. I respect your position, Counselor Matusky, I do. But this is not the place, so I'm going to ask that we cease any more discussion on this. Thank you for taking the time to come up here and speak.
I make a motion to close public participation.
Thank you. All in favor? Clerk will read the... Resume back to the order business.
Item number one.
First of all, before I do apologize, I do want to deem Items 2, 4, and 5 as routine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number one is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to accept a donation from Rita Hurley in the amount of $100 to the City of Everett's Beautification Program account.
Favorable action to accept a donation, a little thanks to be sent.
Second motion on all of that. We have a motion to accept the donation and send a letter of thanks. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It's a vocal question, sorry. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
11 yeas, 0 nays, Mr. President.
It has been passed. Clerk will read item number two.
Counselor McGlaughlin, if you could, if that mic is still on, it's giving an echo. Thank you.
Excuse me, is it possible to take Items 2, 3, 4, and 5 collectively?
Not 3, because that was the only one not deemed routine, Counselor. But you could take 2, 4, and 5, if you'd like.
Most say 2, 4, and 5 collectively.
But we're going to still vote on them separately, because they're financial orders.
Just read the...
Yes, I will.
Okay, we have a motion to take Items 2, 4, and 5 collectively. Clerk will read the items.
Just one moment.
We did, actually.
All in favor?
Item number...
Wait, wait, wait. Hold it, hold it, hold it.
Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion to take Items 2, 4, and 5 collectively.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Clerk will read item... The items.
Item number 2 is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to transfer $400,000 from the Assessors' Overlay Surplus account.
Suspend Rule 13, Mr. Chairman.
I can read the piece. You can't vote on the piece. We're just collectively...
You can't suspend...
The rule before I read it.
Yeah, the item has to be before you, before you can make any... Before you can suspend the rule. Otherwise, what is it you're suspending? So let the clerk read the items first, and then he'll entertain any motions.
Are we ready? Item number 2 is an order to transfer $400,000 from the Assessors' Overlay Surplus account into the following account, Assessors' Professional Services. The purpose of this transfer will be the payment of legal expenses, appraisals, and contractual services. Item number 4, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to transfer the total amount of $621,500 from the CIP Stabilization Fund to the following account below to fund the capital project request for the Sacramento Park renovation project. Sacramento Park renovation project, $621,500. The current balance in the Capital Stabilization Fund is $2,071,865. And item number 5 is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president that an interdepartmental transfer of $100,000 from the DPW Engineering Division Professional Services account into the DPW Engineering Division Salary Account.
Second.
The motion to refer Items 2, 4, and 5 to Ways and Means.
As you have one question, Mr. President, these are voted on separately. Correct? I think I heard you say it. Okay, thank you.
And also, if we could have a representative from the mayor's office there as well.
Mr. President, could we also have Representative...
Not... You don't need to suspend Rule 13, because you're referring it to a committee, Counselor. We could... Well, but until it hasn't, there's been no motion for favorable action, so no need to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, could we also ask a representative of Community Development to appear? If so, then it goes into committee to discuss the Sacramento Park renovations. Thank you.
So the motion to send 2, 4, and 5 to Ways and Means, invite a member of the... Representative to the mayor's office, Community Development, and the CFO.
Yes.
And someone from the Assessors' office.
And we did have a request to vote on them separately, even though it's a referral, so...
You vote on these individually?
And you can do a voice vote, because they're just referrals, Mr. President.
Right, item number 2, all in favor to send it to Ways and Means?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item 2 is passed. Number 4, all in favor to send it to Ways and Means?
Aye.
Closed. Item number 5, same motion, send it to Ways and Means?
Aye.
Closed.
Aye.
Just one moment, please. On item number 5, to send it to Ways and Means, Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
No.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky. Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
So we have nine yeas, two nays. You have referred to Ways and Means. Mr. President.
Clerk will read item number 3.
Item number 3 is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to transfer $50,000 from the Budgetary Fund Balance Free Cash into the Linkage Fee Study account. This transfer will cover the cost to perform a housing linkage fee study for our city.
Mr. President, I know in years past, we've dealt with a lot of linkage fee areas. And I was just wondering if there was ever a study done on housing previous, and if there was something we could compare. I'm sure we're going to go forward with the study.
Just send it to committee.
But I was just wondering if there was already a previous study done in years past. If somebody in the administration could answer that. If not tonight, I'd be okay.
I'd like to send this to Ways and Means, like along with the other things, so that that way invite all my people up. That's it. So I... No more discussion.
I have a motion to send Item 2 to Ways and Means. And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Referral does supersede, actually.
Yes.
The same people, right?
Yes.
CFO and... Would you like... Thank you.
Number 6. Counselor Hanlon?
Yes. They do. All of our order, Mr. President, I have all licenses, bonds, et cetera, for each licensing. These are all renewals, no change in ownership or change in their license at all.
Second motion. Okay, the motion, take Items 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 collectively. Clerk will read the items.
Yes, that's all I read. Item number 6 is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to grant the renewal of a first-class motor dealer license from Honda Cars of Boston 100 Broadway. Item number 7 is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to grant a hotel, this should say renewal license, to the Envision Hotel Boston Everett at 1834 Riviera Beach Parkway. Number 8 is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to grant the renewal of a second-class motor dealer license to Vigor Diesel Injection, Inc., at 50 Mystic Street. Item number 9 is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to grant the petition of a first-class motor dealer license to Boston Freightliner, Inc., at 3 Bow Street. And the final item 10 is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to grant the petition of a renewal for a Class 2 motor dealer license from Mega Auto at 3 Everett Ave.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I believe I know the answer, but on number 9, they are in the process of moving to a new location in this coming year. Will that be automatically transferred to the new location?
Nope. So, if I could, Mr. President? Surrendered their license, and they come... Okay.
This actually came up during our last meeting, okay? They have to apply for the licensing, because they're conducting business at their current location. They will be submitting a new request once they have the new property in compliance. Did I say it right?
You did. You did. And just to add one more thing, because it's a new location, and there was never a license there, more likely than not, we're going to have to do a public hearing also, because new licensees in a new location... So if it's a property that never had a license, they need to come before this body, and I have to mail out within 150 or 200 feet in diameter all the residents, so they can come up and voice their opinion also, just so you know. So it is a little bit different process than what we normally do. Yep, just so you know. You're welcome. Yeah, we haven't done anything.
The motion, favorable action on all five items, for the second?
Yeah, I can combine the two. That's it, okay? So this is for Items 6 and 9, which are both first-class motor dealers. On Items 6 and 9, Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President DePiero.
Yes.
11 yeas, 0 nays on both orders, Mr. President. That was 6 and 9. On item number... 7. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero. Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President DePiero. Excuse me, President Napolitano. It was a whole... Yeah. Sorry, Mr. President. So, it was a whole, yeah, give me, sorry, Mr. President. Item number 8 is an order, sorry, Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
11 yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. And final order, number 10. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
11 yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. That was the final order.
Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, Mr. President, I'd just like to congratulate you on your first full meeting. There's always a baptism by fire somewhere. I think you handled yourself well. Congratulations. And thank you, Counsel Matusky, for making me wear my big pants, big-boy pants tonight. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
My pleasure.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.